If the mayor is on the other side.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Oh, yes, I see her there. I'm gonna move her over as a panelist. Um, Madam Hazel Rogers, when we send you the request to be promoted panelist, you have to accept or else you'll be over on the participant's side. Thank you.
Madam President, can you clarify which mayor, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you clarify the mayor I'm looking for, please?
She's on here.
Oh, sorry.
Just leave that, sir. I need her to uh turn on your screen.
Okay, I see. Okay, okay.
Thank you. All right. We are live on Facebook, so we will govern ourselves accordingly. I want to thank everyone for uh for joining us. Uh, we are gonna get started as we often do with opening prayer. And I have with us Minister Bridget Edwards, who will begin with an opening prayer.
You, Madam President, let us go to the throne of grace. Most gracious eternal God and Father, we give thanks to you for yet another day. Now, God, as we gather in this sacred space and time, we pray, Lord, that you would allow your spirit to be in our midst. As we seek God to have greater understanding, we pray, Lord, that you would be with these that seek office, God, for it is an honorable thing. We ask all these blessings in thy son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Um, let me start. I'm Marsha Ellison. I'm president of the NAACP Fort Lauderdale Broward branch. Um, I will have our partners introduce themselves as we go forward. But I want to begin by saying that all candidates have been invited. So if someone chooses not to join and asks the NAACP audience for their vote, there's nothing we can do about that. We only offer everyone the same opportunity. Uh, we are a nonpartisan organization. Our job is simply to educate the community um on the candidates who are offering themselves up to serve. And you will um, you know, if you have a question, please put it in the Q and A, the chat. Um, but we want to make sure that we get the best candidate. Um, uh, that we have an opportunity to hear from them, know their positions, and what that means to you, because these local candidates are going to affect our lives as we go forward. Um, so with that, I would like to introduce um two of our partners who are on. We will start with um Doctor, and I'm using that title, she has so many, um, Dr. Rosalyn Osgood, who is president of, Dr. Osgood. Madam President.
Of you, and thank you so much for your commitment to public service. I'm Dr. Rosalyn Osgood, and I am the proud president of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Zeta Omega chapter, the premier chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Our sorority has a legacy of leadership to include now having one of our prestigious members serve as the vice president of these United States of America, the first African American woman to do so. We are committed to serving our community and partnering with organizations and those that are in elected office to make sure that we have equality and justice for all and to make sure that women, Black women, get the opportunity to use their gifts, talents, and excellence in various capacities in the work that's being done locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Osgood. And also with us is Joanne Chin, who is representing her chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And my, my sister of, of in OES, Golden Victim Number Forty-four, is Joanne Chin.
Thank you so much, my star sister, Madam President. And Dr. Osgood, you did such a beautiful job with representing us, and we love you dearly. So um I am here from Uptalansai Omega, the unstoppable chapter. We love our premier chapter, but we are unstoppable, but together we are stronger. So I am so happy to be here tonight on behalf of our president, Dr. Ramona Relaford. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, we want to certainly hear from these candidates. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to speak. We decided to do both tonight, because these are, quite frankly, these are our seats. And we want to uh hear from folk who are interested in representing us before we certainly cast our ballots. Ballots, as you know, will be out very soon. So we need to make a decision. Let's start uh with District Eight. And uh to the candidates, you will give a quick opening, say, two minutes. Um, tell us who you are and while you're while, why you're running for office, uh county commissioner. Let's start with Ms. Ad Sakkad.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure for me to be here. Thank you so much, Madam President, for this opportunity. My name is Ad Sakkad. I was born in Port-au-Prince, Haiti. In nineteen seventy-seven, my parents sent for me, and I moved to Waukegan, Illinois, in near Chicago. Nineteen eighty-two, I moved to Florida, and I made Florida my home. Very early on, my parents have instilled in me the value of hard work and education. As a result, I went to school here. I have a bachelor in criminal justice and political science, a master's in business administration. I worked for Jackson Health System for twenty-three years. I'm currently uh with IRE. And um worked for this community for many years, for the past um thirty-five, forty years since I've been here. I have advocated on behalf of um my community when it comes to access to healthcare, a minimum wage increase, a path to citizenship, voting rights issues, and um definitely employment issues uh and and discrimination issues. So I um I am here running for Broward County, because I've been in the trenches for many years, um advocating for the communities. And I've I've decided to to up 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 um up up date my, upgrade my level of um participation by running for office and become the next Broward County Commissioner for District Eight. And my platform, I have workforce housing uh for, due to the housing crisis that we have, economic development, meaning preparing our workforce for the higher paying jobs that will be available. Um, also, our water management, we have um draining, aging, draining, drainage, and we need to upgrade them. We also have issues with the drinking water. We need to have.
Okay, Ms. Sakkad. Thank you. That's time you'll have an opportunity to expand upon that uh very soon. And next for our candidate, um Representative Bobby DeBose. Two minutes, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, and thank you for um presenting this platform for us to reach out and communicate with the District Eight. I am Bobby DeBose, former representative, uh Democratic Minority Leader in the House of Representatives. Prior to that, served as Commissioner of the city of Fort Lauderdale for about six years, where I held uh various leadership roles. I am a son of District Eight, uh born and raised here, and I'm also raised in my family. Um, I'm married to Ibet DeBose, and we have, and I always tell people, we have two slash five kids. Um, we have the pleasure of raising my wife's sister's kids. And the reason why I emphasize that is because it comes from my heart, why I run, why I serve, these issues that we deal with in our uh in our district. Um, I'm running because I feel that I have the most experience to offer District Eight, serving on a local level and serving on a state level. Uh, the thing about Broward County is that we are donor district um to the state, and we don't necessarily always get back our proper resources. And serving locally, I understand those issues. So spending my time in Tallahassee, I want to bring back that experience, so I can make sure that not only we draw down the proper dollars to have the resources to deal with a livable wage and affordable housing, but also understanding the policies that are being shaped and how to advocate for policies that won't take away, you know, home rule or uh preempt our rights here locally. So I am running because I have the experience to make sure that District Eight receives what it deserves, uh not only from the county level, but the state level as well. And I am a very, very proud life member of the NAACP, and I feel both unstoppable and premier.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we will have um Hazel Rogers. Two minutes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. And thank you for giving us this opportunity and our communities this opportunity to hear from me. So, thank you. I'm Hazel Rogers. I was born in Kingston, Jamaica, migrated to this country to be with my mom, Brooklyn, New York, nineteen sixty-nine, and relocated to Broward County in nineteen eighty-one, because my husband wanted to get some sunshine, so I followed him. So I'm married to Clifton Rogers. We've been married for, since nineteen seventy-four. I stop remembering if it's forty-six years or forty-seven, but he is my heart, my supporter. I call him my best friend in everything that I do. I moved, my neighbor was the president of my homeowners association, so I couldn't hide. I had to get involved, because he would not allow me not to get involved. So I started participating with my homeowners association. When I got elected in nineteen ninety-six, I was still the secretary of that homeowners association for three years before I could give up that position. No one wanted it, but it was a good position for me. Willie Webb took me everywhere. My first meeting to the NAACP was through Willie Webb, and I just love him for that. I grew up here. Um, Carlton Moore was my mentor. I, when I was sworn in as president of the Broward League of Cities, I could not choose who would do it, so I selected all three, Kunku, Carlton, and Josephus Agulion. I um, I served for twelve years in the city of Lauderdale Lakes. I'm proud of my service. Some of the activities that I've done or started in the city is till today the economic tool and resource for the city of Lauderdale. That is the Community Redevelopment Agency, and I'll continue as we go along. Thank you.
Okay, and Gatale Ruiz Nicholas.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And once again, it's a pleasure to be here and truly appreciate the organizers. My name is Gatale Ruiz Nicholas, and I'm running for Broward County Commission District Nine. A little bit about me, I moved to the US, particularly New York, in nineteen sixty-nine, like Mayor Rogers, to um basically reunite with my parents. So most of my life at the age, from the age of eleven until the age of twenty-nine or so, I spent in New York City, where I went to school, got my bachelor's degree at Petunia University, and came down to Florida in nineteen eighty-six. I remember going through an incident where, again, we had people who were voiceless, who needed a voice, and watching and witnessing what they have gone through. I remember discussing it with my dad, and my dad says, Gatale, if they do not have a voice, you need to be their voice. From that point on, it was a responsibility that I took very, very seriously, which is why I've spent the twenty-five, thirty years here in Florida, building, managing, and mobilizing the community, and really serving as a bridge with all of the different communities and really valuing the mosaic of cultures we have. What I'm mostly proud of, and I know I can bring in to this district, which is the most diverse district of Broward County, I have instituted Minority Women Business Enterprise Program. I have diversified workforce. I've done human relations, where I've had people of different groups working together, beautifying their communities. And my public service, again, entails of serving on the Board of Hispanic Unity, serving on the Board of Two-One-One, serving on the Board of the Red Cross, et cetera. So public service has always been my passion.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go to questions. We'll start with our partners, Ms. Joanne Chin.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So for all of the candidates, um, we will start with Mr. Bobby DeBose. Can you please let us know, what do you feel your responsibilities to the Black community would be if you're elected?
Oh, man. Um, thank you, Ms. Chin, for that question.
Two minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I think uh first thing that comes to mind is to be unapologetically Black. And the reason why I say that, because the time and space that we are in, in America, it's no secret what we're dealing with as far as the Black community. Um, my experience even in Tallahassee, there were times where we dealt with issues and different agencies, and they would always come and talk to us about diversity and minorities. And I would always ask the question, how are Black folks doing? Because in too many instances, when we talk about minority and diversity achievement, we look at Black folks are worse off than we were twenty and thirty years ago. So my commitment to the Black community, when I say to be unapologetically Black, is to make sure that I'm always in the mindset of asking and thinking and being direct and intentional about the issues that we have, from criminal justice reform, from economic development to education, all those things we deal with. But we gotta be mindful and always ask the question, how Black folks are doing, and be very intentional about that, because in this day and time, it's always colored, it's always watered down, and many times, they will present things showing that minorities are doing better, and Black folks are doing worse.
Thank you. And Hazel?
Okay, hello. Well, I would say that that is also major issue for me, and I have demonstrated in the past that I recognize my duties and my responsibility to the Black community. I can tell you, because of me, we had an attorney, the first Black attorney to be the attorney for a city, came through the city of Lauderdale Lakes. The first lobbyist to, to be a partner, because of Lauderdale Lakes, she was our lobbyist, and she became a partner of her company. I can go on, the CPA, the first one that looks like us, came during my tenure, because I know how to shepherd that for the benefit of our community. So I will tell you, I, I go to, I went to school as an elected official. I was hands-on to make sure that my cities benefit from my service. I served on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Land Preservation Board, and out of that, we got three parks in the city of Lauderdale Lakes. There was a deficiency. You have to be strong-willed. You have to know, it's not just about serving just to be there. You have to show the results of your work. And I can work for someone and be doing my job, but I worked for the people of this Lauderdale Lakes District Ninety-five, and I will do that at the county level. I am best prepared, as my colleagues stated. I am best prepared, because I was a city commissioner, so I was hands-on. I am, I was a state rep, passing legislation that today, mental health and substance abuse under one division of service. I presented that bill as a freshman in the Senate. Okay, so we know how to, I know how to get things done. I know what to do to make things happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Gatale?
Well, thank you so much for this question. Uh, what I want to say is, I have spent all my life improving people's lives. I go back to the NAACP when we first started to really give first offenders their um, their rights. I remember Mathis, guys, Al Callaway, I've worked for a city. We started a whole movement where people were signing memorandum of understanding to really hire them. Again, I've mentioned economic development. I've mentioned diversifying the workforce. And I want to say that with a twenty-five-year career in government, as a staff person, I was responsible for researching. I was responsible for creating and really packaging materials to bring to the commission and for them to approve. So with that, I believe I understand the process of legislating from an administrative perspective, as well as from, from a, uh, I have not been in elected position yet, but I can, I know exactly what the elected officials were looking for. Now, what is the most important thing about my running is that it is time for creative ideas in Broward County. It is time to solve the problems, to get us into the future, not to stay still and status quo. I believe I have the qualifications. I have the creative mind and also the willingness and compassion to serve my district. Fifty-one percent African American, twenty-one percent Hispanic, twenty-four percent African Caucasian. So we have a majority minority district, and the work I've done as a human relations professionals will really serve us well and help them succeed. I've helped people succeed in business, in academia, in jobs. So I intend to do that as well as county commissioner.
Thank you.
And Adi?
Yes. I, throughout the thirty-five, forty years that I've been here in the United States, I have done nothing else but be proud to be a Black Haitian woman. So as a three times minority, I have to fight for everything that I, that I have. And one of those, the ways for me to commit to the Black community is just to uphold myself, my ideals, my beliefs, and everything else that I stand for. I have worked in this community throughout the years. I, like I said before, I fought for voting rights issues. I, I, I am a member of the Pembroke Pines, Pembroke Pines Diversity and Heritage Board. The only reason I'm there is simply because I want to make sure that our communities are respected, they are visible, and they get what they're supposed to, to get. And also, as a member of the Broward County Democratic Executive Board, I am very proud to be there, and one of the things that I make sure we do is to ensure that our communities are visible. Um, as also a former president of the Haitian Democratic Club, the, the fight is there. As a mother of two Black men, I understand and make sure that my children understand also what, what, what they represent as Black men and how to deal in disco, in this environment, society where being Black is, is, is not something that uh people honor. Uh, my pride, I'm very proud of my, the education that I've given them. I continue to support the community in every way possible. I'm also a member of the NAACP at Jackson Health System. One of the things that um as a manager I have done, I have the experience, thirty-two years experience working in management. I have instituted and developed um programs for, for Jackson Health System and their employees.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Thank you. Next, we will go to Dr. Rosalyn Osgood.
Madam President. Oftentimes, when we address social justice issues, we don't highlight environmental justice as part of this. There is a critical issue right now that is facing all of us in Broward County as it relates to a partial of land behind um Arthur Ashe School and where the training is, and a partial of land that the school board sold to the county several years ago. And the county created a plan to put a new facilities there, a new facility there that could possibly include a facilities for the sheriff's office um as well as the medical examiner's office that's now on Dania Beach. They say they outgrown it, and they want to move it to this location. Many of us and members of our different sororities, fraternities, Divine Nine, live in that community, work in that community, and we are really fed up with all of these environmental hazards. I think we have like three cemeteries within a fifteen-mile radius, and an incinerator, and old dump. It's just a lot of environmental catastrophes that come aboard in, when we're trying to do business in the county. And it appears to many of us that the Black community is targeted, and it results in all kinds of cancer that attacks the bodies of Black women, Black men, young boys, and young girls. Right now, that item has been paused, because a group of us in the community worked and rallied around the community to stop it from going forward. At some point, if you are elected, you're going to have to deal with this issue. So I, first of all, I want to know if you are aware of the issue, and if you are, what is your position on us not having a morgue put in the heart of a Black community?
Who would you like to start with, Doc?
Uh, I will start with Ad first.
Yes, I am, okay, I'm aware of um this issue. It was brought up by Kristen Jones at one of our um finance management meetings at the Broward, uh Broward Democratic Party. This is definitely a detriment to our communities. We understand there are certain things, once you bring them to, to, in a neighborhood, it brings down the value of everybody's houses. Uh, there have been petitions in some other places in Broward, where they wanted to bring in, um, to open up a prison, and the community fought it, and they won. Uh, those kind of things are definitely not to promote or improve the environment. They're simply there because this is, if we allow it to happen, it will be to our detriment, and it, this is not, um, people, the community will lose, and there is no reason for, for this to happen. We can always uh fight it, um, bring the government to find other solutions in other places that will not diminish or decrease uh the values of our home and dismantle our community and social services and the upbringing of our kid, children. Definitely, um, when I become the commissioner, I will fight for, uh, against this and not to allow it to happen.
Thank you. Mayor Rogers?
Thank you, Dr. Osgood. Yes, I am aware, was aware, although was not focused on it at the time until the community came up. The community leaders made the loudest noise, and we heard, and because of that, I learned from it. But I'm an elected official that engages my community. And everyone that knows me, if the community does not want it, they, I have their voice. I will talk to the community, and I will make a decision. And yes, we have lived in communities that don't have adequate resources. That is not one that I believe is an advantage or something that we need in our communities right now. So yes, I would not support having that place in the community just because, but I'm gonna be listening to or like um the community in everything that I do, the community that I represent. I will make sure I have their voices. I remain their voices as we address the issues. I am not, go ahead. Thank you very much for the question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers. Um, Ms. Nicholas?
Gatale, um, yes, thank you so much. Um, I also believe that citizens' involvement in education is key. You've got to govern, not from the top down, but also working in collaboration with your community. I believe that the Black community, particularly when you are dealing with environmental issues, they're all food desert. We need to bring in um grocery stores. We need to bring in banks, but by bringing prisons, by bringing more in a community that is already struggling, I think it is not the way to go. There's gotta be areas that are zoned for certain types of businesses, and those alternatives should be looked at and discussed with the community. So from that perspective, we have got to look at the Black community. We have got to look at the low-income communities. We are pushing our people away. They have. We are pushing our people away. They have nowhere else to go. So we've got to nurture those community and really elevate them rather than putting things that may not be in their best interest. Now, the flip side of it is you've got to look at job development. There may be a possibility of job development, but then again, that job development does not have to be in the black community or the low-income community. Those communities need to be uplifted, and I will fight for my constituents. I will fight for them until they get the best and what they deserve.
Thank you, Representative DeBose.
Thank you, Dr. Oska, for the question. You know, when I hear this question, the first thing that popped in my mind is the definition, the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. This is nothing new. When we talk about, uh, environmental justice, uh, these are things that have been presented to our community, like was stated with incinerators. You know, we have baby Wingate and we have, you know, the, the, the huge incinerator, uh, Wingate, and we know the results of them. So this one is simple. Uh, my position is the same position I took when I found out about it is no, absolutely not. Um, it's not something I'll wait on until I get on the commission. It's something that I've been fighting for. I've been protesting, you know, I'm raising my kids in the same community that I grew up in. You know, I lost my mother to a very rare disease that we're still trying to figure out. There's so many people in our community that are still, um, being affected by these same similar projects that have been brought in with bells and whistles and telling us they're good for the community. At the end of the day, government needs to start listening to the community. And the community is screaming loud and clear, hell no, we don't want this. So my position is the position, whether elected or not, because I live in this community. I grew up in this community and I see the effects of things like this in our community. And it's time we stop, you know, looking at it what it is, you know, environmental justice has become a very, uh, you know, sexy topic when we talk about politics. But we can't address the new environmental justice without talking about what government has done in the past and what they continue to do. So when we talk about this, this particular project, we got to frame it in the experience that we've had with Wingate and other projects that have been brought to our community. Again, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. We got to fight like our lives depend on to stop these things from coming in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted just a follow-up, Dr. Oska. The, it, it is, uh, the project of the morgue, and you could make it sound however it is that you want, forensic lab, and they had this fancy name and fancy, uh, uh, presentation. But I'm, a part of the presentation said that there was an agreement with the Broward County School District um, to, uh, present some type of programming, um, for the school district. I understand that that was incorrect. There was also, uh, alleged to be an agreement with Fort Lauderdale Police Department to put a substation there. Um, that has proven to be false as well. So the only thing standing between the morgue going into that, uh, community and not will be, uh, the people on this, to put, on this, on this, this Zoom call. So we are looking firmly for you, as I understood it, everybody said absolutely not, that they would not vote in support of the morgue going on that location. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure, um, because they were, they had this really fancy presentation, and that's not really, wasn't really the truth. And, and what would you have done differently? Um, because one of the oldest trick in the book is to, uh, say that you've gone out to the homeowners association. For those of us that go, um, we know that there, and more, more likely than not, there's not a whole lot of people there. And, uh, just a small representation of the community may be at those homeowners association, meaning people have work, they have lives, they have other stuff. So what will you, what would you have done differently to reach out to the community to find out what exactly their feelings were on the building of this morgue in this, uh, community? Unless we'll start. Okay, we will start, uh, with, how about, uh, Adzakot?
Okay, um, it's, um, the, the best way to disseminate information nowadays is through social media. But there are some neighborhoods or some, uh, people who are not too familiar with social media. So the other best way is to advertise it on our, um, magazines and newspapers, but also in, um, making flyers and distributing flyers, a lot, um, alarming or letting people know this is happening and make sure that they would, um, gather together, uh, either to protest rallies or go on video, um, have one of those radio commentators or, um, personalities to dedicate a few hour, a few minutes to, to that subject and, and make it like a marathon, asking people to call in and ask questions. Uh, um, in my, uh, experience, um, all of those, all of the above have always worked in getting the words out and getting people motivated.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers.
Uh, thank you. I can tell you even during COVID, we, I would get the community to be engaged. And trust me, I would be knocking on doors just like I do when I need your vote. If that is very important to the community, we will be having our own town hall meeting and making, and bringing all the experts, bring the resources to the community instead of expecting the community to come to us. And yes, we have other modes of communication today. We will have, I would make sure my district, my office has the resources that it needs to communicate to that, to that, my constituents. That's what I do. That's how I communicate, always having my town hall meetings, always sharing information in different languages. So I know I'm reaching everyone in the district. One size does not fit all, so we should continue to educate, educate, inform, and making sure that we use the tools that are available to us. Then local newspapers, we just don't go to the traditional newspapers for information anymore. So we need to use those other, um, non-traditional media that's out there that is as diverse as the community that we represent. And that's how I will get the word out. But my shoes will be on and my sneakers will be on, my bullhorn will be with me because that's how I communicate. We have to reach the people to build consensus, but there comes a time if they're not there, we have to do the right thing by the black community. And we know what the right thing is, and we should be watching this climate change and how it will impact our community because our water supplies will be impacted now that we have to be washing our hands and sanitizing more. If we continue to have, um, flooding and hot weather and people getting sick, trust me, that will be impacting our communities more. So we have to be that voice to make sure the resources come into District Nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative DeBose.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'll, I'll say all of the above, and then I will add that what I would do is to, one, make sure that I partner with all the ally groups in the community, uh, such as the NAACP, the Divine Nine, uh, traditional methods, our churches, you know. Also, not only going out and knocking on doors myself, but you can do campaigns to knock on doors. You can, um, we used to do crime, uh, walks when I was, uh, on the city commission. There are so many ways that we can get out and we can, you know, from the county level, spend money to, uh, direct target. Because of technology, we can focus in on an area, we can target for everything else. You know, government can target to sell cigarettes and vapes and candy and stuff to kids and be very successful with those things. So we use those same, uh, uh, technologies and that same data, and we target the community, we target District Eight, and we make sure we exhaust all methods, be them, uh, old traditional methods and new, to make sure. Because on an issue like this, again, we've seen the impacts of these shiny tools that are, are things that are bad, that are wrapped around in, in these shiny packages and the impacts that they have. So I, that, for me, I would definitely exhaust all the tools and resources and platforms that we have to communicate. It would be more than just going to our HOAs, which are a strong, uh, cornerstone in communicating. But we need to make sure we talk to the people on the corners, people under the trees, because they're affected as well.
Thank you. Let's just start Chin.
Thank you, Madam President. So as y'all know, we're all.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My, I apologize. I'm sorry. My, my question was, uh, uh, when the, it was, it was, it's being said that the, and when it comes to the morgue, that the community was, was notified. Uh, however, the community said they were not notified. And I know that there was some talk of going to the school, going to the homeowners association meetings and gotten certain people to sign up, but the bulk of the community did not know about it because they're not generally at the homeowners association meeting. So my question to you, when it comes to the morgue, a project such as that, what would you have done differently to communicate, um, to the affected community? That this is, to find out if they really wanted this project in their, in their community?
Thank you for the question, and I also echo what many of my colleagues have mentioned. I think there was a time you called them charrettes. Charrettes are community meetings where you have them at the churches, where you have them at schools. You have them at different places and different times where people can not only express themselves, but you use that opportunity to educate them about the risks, about the benefits, their pros and cons. So you give them the whole picture so that they can really decide. I feel that, uh, at least in many communities, the churches play a big role. And I know particularly in the Haitian-American community, that congregation believes in what the pastors tell them. So I would work very closely with the faith-based community, schools. Those are assets in our community. If we're looking at needs, we'll never fulfill the needs. We've got to begin to look at our assets, the schools, the churches, the nonprofit organization, really coalesce so that we're looking at the problem from all angles. And of course, you know, your, your, your communication pieces, whether it's social media, whether it's newspaper, television, I think that also needs to take place and it must be multilingual. Because again, I would be dealing with a very, we're dealing with a very diverse county. So I believe that getting people involved, but also educating them because quite often they really don't know the extent of the problem. So you bring in experts, residents and stakeholders from the community together to address the issue and also come up with suggestions.
Thank you. And now Ms. Chin.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So as we know, we're all going through a health crisis right now with COVID-19. But in the black communities, we know we had a bigger health crisis, have always been around, which is gun violence. So I just want to know from each and every one of you, what tools do you believe that Broward County needs to reduce when it comes to gun violence and what type of policies will you try to implement from day one? And we can start with Mayor Hager.
Okay, that one is, I follow what's happening at the federal level and I follow what's being done at the state. I don't know what Broward County is doing. I know we would follow whatever the state does. For me, making sure that you're at least twenty-one. If you have to be twenty-one to vote and to buy liquor, then I believe you need to be twenty-one to walk around with a weapon as dangerous as a gun, all right? So yes, I believe in some additional regulations as it relates to the weapon itself and who can use it. And until we take care of that, one step at a time, I like what is happening at the federal level. And if Broward County needs to adopt its own guidelines, I know I would definitely, I can tell you I'll support it. I don't carry a gun, I don't pack one, but I have family and friends that does. But I believe those that are, this history shows us, the science shows us that the kids that, the folks that are shooting, most of the shooting, they're underage. So if we start with that population, then, then we'll be on the right path. I don't believe gun buyback work. I know we have tried it before numerous times, however, we have offered dollars to get these weapons off the, you know, out of our communities, but we know it does not work. We need to start where we will see some effects and the changes that is necessary to take dangerous weapons. We're not at war in our communities, wearing guns are coming into your bedrooms and you're sleeping. And, you know, it's just, we have to address it, and it comes with education also. If we create job and opportunities for our kids, our communities might not be so dangerous. So let's look at that also. Put people to work so that they can live, live in a decent neighborhood, own their own homes, and educate their families. That also is another resource that we need to address that issue.
Thank you.
As it affects our community. I thank you.
Thank you. And Representative DeBose?
Uh, Ms. Chin, thank you for the question. Uh, gun violence is definitely a deep issue nationwide and, uh, has a, uh, very different impact in our community. But I don't think we can truly talk about the topic without talking about mental health, which is a big part of it, which is underfunded. So when I think about gun violence, I think about mental health and I think about the two and the impact that it's having in our community. We always talk about the lives that we're losing to gun violence and especially with black men. But the suicide rate among black men is rising, so we must talk about the two. As we look at what they're trying to do federally and on the state level, we can't just sit back and wait. We need to, locally, we have to act. We need to make sure whatever policies are in place, that they are definitely enforced. And in many cases, we have seen where different police departments have done well and taken things a step farther and become a model to help guide different states and federal. And I think, uh, on the county level, not only do we stand in our place, but we make sure that we're working with the different municipalities to help them get there. Because we can, in our own jurisdictions, create a safer environment by addressing gun violence and again, dealing with, uh, mental health. And it's true that we definitely need economic development, education, and all those things, uh, are more comprehensive to the issue. But I think the core part of it, when we're dealing with gun violence and we, as on a local level, what we can do, because we do get preempted, but our local police departments, our sheriff departments, and I've seen in other country, I mean, other, um, states, where they have taken a more bold and aggressive role. And as Commissioner of District Eight, that's the approach, that's the, the, the atmosphere that I would create as we move forward when it comes to gun violence, um, uh, gun, uh, violence prevention. Let's be bold, let's, let's be the leader, let's work with our ally partners. Let's continue to work with the NAACP like we've done on the state and federal level. Let's bring in the Divine.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, um, this topic, it's been very hard the last couple of weeks, really watching these young children, elementary school children dying. Most recently, we had a child at home shot by a family member. So it is telling us there's a problem. Mental health is an issue, but the availability, access to gun is something else that we need to look at. Um, though the state has a lot to say about the regulation, I still believe that at the county level, there must be ways we can diminish the amount of guns that are in place. Some cities, the buyback system has worked very well for them. Now, the universal background is one that I think we really has to look at. People have to go through a background check for so many different things. I think once they own a gun, they have to do the universal background. And it would be great to have an assessment as to whether or not, and, and it goes back to the mental health, whether or not this person could be a risk to themselves or to others. So there are many creative ways of handling it, but I will tell you why. Elections has consequences. If we do not put someone in Tallahassee that can really help us handle those issues, we will not be able to solve them. So we've got to start with who is there because this person is dictating so many things that is impacting our community. So uh, it goes back to the voter education, putting the right people in place, the universal background. All of the above. I think we should use all of the above because enough is enough.
Thank you.
Anna, Adar?
This is old, old? Okay. Um, I, I concur with everything that has been said before. Definitely, there is a need for Broward County as an entity to do something about um, gun control. They can pass uh, the laws or regulations as uh, needed. And currently, we know the Supreme Court and the Second Amendment as people are um, uh, um, supportive of the Second Amendment stating that they have the right to bear arms. But uh, back in 2016, the um, Ninth Secret Court of Appeal had uh, declared that um, the right to own or to carry a gun is not unlimited. There, there are limits to that right as per the Second Amendment. And there are ways for Broward County, even if the state is not doing anything and we, because of uh, who we have in government right now, as a governor and the majority Republicans in state of Florida, uh, we cannot afford to wait uh, for a change in that area. So Broward County definitely would need to do something to limit um, uh, the, the um, the ta- the age of people buying guns. That's, that's one thing. And second of all, it's also uh, limit we- working with the mental health um, area. Uh, we understand there are people with serious mental health issues. Uh, we, we've, we've known this for many years. And now is the time for all of us, whether it be on the State Department, the Supreme Court, or uh, Broward County to uh, do something about it, to act on it.
Thank you. Okay, did we get everyone? And with that, we will go to uh, Dr. Osgood.
Madam President, in our sororities and fraternities, we have a broad reach across the county. Our sororities and fraternities have memberships of college-educated black people. As we're in a very unique time where I think we as people of color have come to have a better appreciation for our history, no matter what geographical location we were, our ancestors were thrown off the boat at, whether it was America, Jamaican, Haiti. We know that we add value. We know collectively that this country was built on our backs. And as we move forward, unity is very, very important. As we look at the makeups of many of our sororities and fraternities, we have Black Americans, we have Haitian members, Jamaican members, and we love each other. We love each other collectively. And we're looking for partnerships with elected officials that's gonna come to the table with us and help us to maximize our resources. Many of our fraternities and sororities are not lacking in some instances when it comes to resources. Some of us raised fifty-five, fifty-six thousand dollars in five hours for scholarships. But the only time we really see elected officials is at our annual party or when they're running for office. So as we move forward, are you committed to building community? And I know that when you're an elected official, you represent all the people that live in your area. But we're at a time now where Black leaders have to be, have more courage to specifically talk about issues that are related to Black people, especially when they're the majority of the population in our district. So are you willing to work to build unity within the Black community with Americans, Jamaicans, and Haitians? And then my second question is, is a lot, some of the county's policies are not friendly to community-based organizations. Our sororities and fraternities, we have foundations. We have resources that we would appreciate opportunities to have matching grant funds to help deliver a lot of the dynamic evidence-based programming that we offer. But we have not had a champion that has focused on community-based organizations that are not within the traditional structure of the United Way of YMCA. So what is your commitment to those two things that I mentioned?
Who would you like to start with?
I will start with Representative DeBose.
Thank you, Dr. Osgood, for that question. And um, I understand, I feel it, being a member of the Divine Nine, uh, member, proud member of Capo Fisad Fraternity Incorporated. And um, I, I do show up at the parties, but I'm there at the meetings and I've been uh, a lead advisor for our male mentor program for uh, close to, I don't know, a decade now and a hundred percent graduation rate. So I get that, I understand that. And again, that's the true experience I'll be able to bring to the table. Uh, as you talk about communities and unity as relates to um, Black Americans, Jamaicans, Haitians. Well, I grew up in a split household. My, my grandfather is Jamaican. He's from um, as I was saying, the country, Saint Elizabeth, Bakayat. Um, and my, and my grandmother is uh, Black American from, you know, Georgia. So um, I, I get that. I grew up and I understand that delicate balance and I have that experience as well. Um, you know, when I, when I was at the University of Florida, we were required to take uh, ten credit hours of a foreign language. Well, I, I took Haitian Creole and I got an A and a B plus. So I learned that culture there. So I think that again, I have this experience where I can bring people together because you're, you're right. At the end of the day, uh, folks, when they look at us, they don't look at us differently. They look at us as Black folks and we all tend to suffer uh, institutional uh, racism and all those different things. So to both your questions, again, I have the experience on both ends to uh, hit the ground running and make sure that I can address those so that our community could move forward and be prosperous in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next up?
Next, we'll go to Gisele.
Yes, this is the stuff I've championed all my life. In my professional life, particularly here in South Florida. I don't know if you remember an organization called the National Conference of Christians and Jews. What we did, we had unit town retreat weekends where high school students could really frankly look at one another, understand their bias. And at the end of the weekend, understood we are all human beings. So those are the initiatives that we need to start at a very young age. In terms of dealing with the community itself, I have to tell you that Broward County has a program called dismantling racism. It's an opportunity to really educate foreigners and others who truly don't understand how that institutionalized racism really pits us apart. It was meant that way. So we've got to reverse that. Personally, as a county commissioner, if I'm doing business with your organization, guess what? Somebody in your organization needs to go through that program so that they can bring in that culture in your organization. So we start at a very young age and then bring it to contractors who are getting money from us to do business. So they've got to be part of the solution. Building a community requires also an intentional initiative. I was very surprised to see that Broward County does not have a multicultural nor a diversity committee. So when you have such a com- committee, you can work with all of the different groups. You work with them. We have fun together. We play together. So the community, really, a lot of the barriers get to be removed. So I can be very creative there, but that's what I've done most of my life. I have championed e- equity. I have championed inclusion in the last twenty-five years. So that will be fun for me.
Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. And as, you know, I would just say, encourage you to find out a little more about sororities and fraternities. Um, we probably have a lot of our members teaching those courses. Um, I wanted to speak clear with my question. It's about building relationships and building trust because we can go to those trainings if you can afford to be off the tool days or take the time. But a lot of times when we move away from those trainings, they're not actualized. And I just believe that where we are as a people collectively together, what's gonna allow us to move forward stronger is that we, the leaders in our community, make a commitment to, to be together. You know, we certainly not gonna agree on everything. So I apologize if my question was not clear. I just wanted to reiterate that. And I'm gonna go to Arne next.
If I may, can I?
Thank you. Thank, thank you very much.
Can I, can I?
Hang on, Gata, hang on. Go ahead, Arne.
Thank you very much, Doctor Osgood. This is great. This is wonderful. This is one, one area that I've always um, that always bothered me to, to, uh, on occasions to see um, we as a Black community um, sometimes uh, have different views on things. Uh, I am a member of the Black Broward County, Broward Democratic Black Caucus. I'm a member of the NAACP. I have uh, tried throughout my activism to always um, be uh, with my Black community because uh, as you said, it doesn't matter uh, where the boat dropped us, whether it's in Haiti, Jamaica, or the United States, we are all in the same boat currently. And um, I do um, believe that our children, regardless of um, which um, uh, which um, Caribbean or uh, United States, uh, Black American, they are still the same. And uh, we, it is time, I truly believe, I'm so happy you brought that up. It is time that us as Black people to lead the narrative and not allow people to think that we are divided, not allow people to think that uh, to bringing uh, those issues that immigrants are taking your jobs, all kinds of stuff to divide us. Uh, they are, they are just propaganda to keep us divided. And I'm so happy to see under leadership, uh, we are discussing this, the fact that we're bringing this up. I'm so happy that it's done. And I've always uh, been an inclusive person and respect is my um, model. We need to respect each other and we need to promote and, and, and do things together and change the narrative and lead the narrative uh, as Black people.
You will go to Neil Rogers and back to you, Gisele.
You're muted.
Hey, thank you for that question. I think it's a question that needs an answer. And as always, we, we have, we are talking and really, there's no action. And I have to feel it. You have to feel it. You have to be around that person to learn from that person, understand that we recognize as immigrants that there are opportunities here in this country. And some of us did not come here because of our choices, choices made by our parents. And we bring our culture with us wherever we go. So when I was at a redistricting meeting years ago, my first redistricting meeting, just for information, and I realized they were trying to divide the Black community. And I did not know what else to say other than if I did not open my mouth and you heard my accent, all you would know is that I'm a Black person. So your decision should be made for this Black community is to recognize our diversity, but know that you don't legislate just for Jamaicans. You don't legislate just for, you legislate dealing with the issues. And all of us have the same issues. And I, I'm just so happy that we are feeling good about our leadership, recognizing that we have a role to play. And it starts with our children because adults, I believe, we can't change anymore. So I strongly believe we need to deal with our children so they are proud of theirs, themselves, their culture. And they're, as we do events, we invite everyone to the events. If you have an event and you don't see another culture there, you're just divisive. And I invite my friends to everything. We have a multicultural festival in Lauderdale, Lakes, and everyone is invited. We create the artists that participate. We make sure one is from a few of the countries, you know? We, you have to make an effort to change the narrative and people have to feel welcome to. We have to feel welcome.
Thank you.
Gisele, you had a, a follow-up?
Do a one-minute follow-up.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to follow up. What, one of the things that I think needs to be recognized is the fact that until we can create a, an opportunity for us to work together, to play together, to learn together, it's not going to happen. Yes, the training.
You're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, uh, thanks again for the opportunity to really respond back. What I was saying is, it is important for us to find opportunities where we can learn about one another first. Yes, we are all Black. The uniqueness in each group is different, but guess what? Together, we are stronger. Once I feel your pain, no matter who you are, I've also feel that, as the mayor mentioned, the issues are the same. We're all human beings. Quality of life, we all deserve to have quality of life. So when I mention these types of program, it's only the first step. And sometimes that's what it takes. Removing those barriers is always the first step.
Thank you.
And thank, and thank you. I just believe that in our sororities and fraternities, we have the first step because we have a model where we all work together. We all love and support each other. We're just looking for leaders that are going to partner with us and help us scale what we're doing and provide resources through our foundation for us to do it. We wanna be partners. We don't wanna just know people by name and passing around. So thank all of you for your responses.
Thank you. Let me ask, I know that the district has, uh, Broward County School District has proposed a tax re- referendum. I do know that the current commissioner of District Nine has come out against it. Um, so I would like to know where you all are on the proposed tax referendum. I haven't heard. Uh, we will reach out to um, uh, to the superintendent um, to discuss how it's gonna be spent. But I'm gonna pivot just a minute before I go to you um, and say, uh, uh, Dr. Osgood, can you put your pivot back to your school board service and tell us a little bit about what the money is gonna be used for? Um, that is, if it is, if it is indeed passed?
Oh, certainly. I will just talk about it as a resident of Broward County. Um, some, some people get confused that I'm still in the school board issues. I will always be because the school board is a major employer and the hard-working people that work there are the catalysts of our communities. So the referendum is a continuation of the referendum that you're already operating in. It's to continue to provide resources for uh, salary raises and bonuses for mental health workers in the schools, for safety. A lot of the safety policy that came from Tallahassee was unfunded mandates. It's also being shared with charter schools. That is a law that the state put in place that anytime we go out for a ballot referendum, the traditional school board has to share it with the charter, the public charter school. So those monies, the school district on their site has a chart that tell you the percentage of the monies there and how they are allocated. But it is to continue the services. If this referendum does not pass, and I wanna be clear about this, if it does not pass, people will be laid off. Children will have less resources in classroom. The whole reason we're even dealing with a referendum is because the state, under the last two Broward County unfriendly educational friendly governors, have continued to reduce the funding for public education. If you go back and do the research on capitalism, you'll understand why it's happening. There is a straight, a, a big move to privatize public education. So as the state keeps taking money away from the public school system, then there are not enough resources for school boards to give proper raises, to buy supplies. There are different things that you, you're restricted in how you can spend the money. So this is a not, this is not about whether you like somebody or not. This is about our kids. It's about our hard-working people that work in the school district that are already. It's about our hardworking people that work in the school district that are already underpaid. That deserve to have salary increases or bonuses so that they can live and take care of their families. This is a tax that we're saying, we're agreeing to pay so that we can fund or better fund education. In our county, Miami has already passed their referendum. Broward has already passed their referendum. And it is those people that are, you know, working every day, already being underpaid. The district has to bring, all employees have to bring everybody up to fifteen dollars an hour by twenty twenty four. So these types of extra monies that we would make a commitment, I think it's like fifty dollars more than what we're paying now. You know, that's a hairdo and a nails for our sister, a jacket or a ticket, two or three tickets to the Heat game for our brothers. That we can use to help our kids and helps us, help better sustain. Uh, 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 a part of our community that is very critical when it comes to our students. And all of those hardworking individuals that work in our school system on all levels. So go to the district website. It'll give you the truth about the breakdown. Um, it's not money to, for further construction projects. In that sense. The district went out for the first bond knowing that it was only one third of the money they needed. To address a lot of the facility issues from the old buildings in the district. So talk to any principal of a school, any teacher, they can talk to you about the critical need that the district have. Because the state is not, has not adequately funded our school districts in a number of years.
Thank you. And with that said, let us move to, uh, to Mayor Rogers, your thoughts on the tax referendum. Knowing that, uh, the person who's sitting in nine right now has said no. Uh, where are you today, Madam Mayor?
The person who is in nine said no.
That's correct.
Salaries for our teachers, for safety in our schools. That's what I knew that first referendum was about. Because that was in the legislature, we weren't funding at the level that we should. Okay, our teachers are underpaid. Those that are educating our community are not prepaid for that. I have a professor that called me and he wanted to make sure, you know, when you put into policy that you're doing. Your teachers, you will have special housing that they can get various discounts. A professor asked me to include, be specific, to include your professors because they are not being paid either. And I don't know if we have been addressing that at all. Those that are educating are charged to educate our communities. Are not being paid. That brain drain is leaving Florida totally. And that's why there's a shortage in everything that we look at. So you know my vote. We'd be supporting our teachers to make sure that they can have a decent salary and live here in Broward County. So salaries and safety of our schools was the reason for that bond issue and we need to make sure. We provide same as we go forward.
Thank you. Gata.
Yes, um, my dad was a teacher, my husband is a teacher. So I find that our teachers. They really are very important to the formation of young adult. They have not been paid well for the work that they do. And the level of responsibility they're expected to fulfill. So I, any money. That will go to teachers, law enforcement, I don't think we can really compromise that. Yet at the same time, you all often have the top heavy people. Making hundreds of thousands of dollars. If there is anything, I think those funds need to be redistributed where it goes where. Particularly with the teachers. So yes, I will support it, but at the same time. I would not want those who are making two hundred thousand dollars to also receive more funding for their salaries.
Thank you. Um, Arzakad.
Yes, um, definitely. I would support the referendum that will provide. More money for the teachers, teachers who are not paid enough, but yet they are. Uh, expected or, um, required to some degree to purchase supplies. For their classrooms with their meager salaries. This is, uh, this is outrageous. Definitely the referendum will help with that. I totally support it. And we need to see the strategy is a continuity of the racism. Uh, systemic racism in terms of, um, depleting or not giving the resources that is necessary. And we all know, um, our, um, low income areas, uh, communities are the ones who will suffer with a dis referendum. If this referendum does not pass, because most of the time, the, those schools are the schools that where the vouchers. Uh, very, uh, prolific and people are leaving those schools to go to, to, uh, those private schools. And then, and thus less, uh, less, uh, resources for these schools. Definitely, uh, the referendum is the only thing we need to do right now. But in, in, uh, coming down in twenty twenty two, we must also vote out the governor. Who is not supportive and is not doing anything for, for the constituents, for the residents of the state of Florida. And also if we were to vote for Val Demings, that will create the possibility for the build back better. To, to pass in, in, in the federal government and definitely we, 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 we will not. And we, we would have a better, 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 uh, opportunities, better resources, uh, to keep this going. But since we cannot wait until twenty twenty four, uh, for this, uh, well, twenty twenty two. We, we have to go ahead and pass the referendum and, and help our children.
Thank you, ma'am. Representative DeBose.
Uh, thank you for the, uh, question. Um, listen, absolutely. Um, it's a shame what our educators are paid. Uh, when we're compared to the rest of the nation, we have the six largest school district. But we're at the bottom when it comes to pay. A lot of that has to do with the state. You know, we're talking about a housing crisis, talking about livable wages that'll be addressed, getting at least up to fifteen. Uh, dollars per hour. You have, you know, two teachers living together that can barely. You know, pay their, their mortgages and their bills. So absolutely anything that we could do, we need to do. You know, we were talking, what can we do on a local level? Well, this is a great example of what the action has been done locally. To take care of a problem that's created by the state. I, I was in Tallahassee for almost eight years and we sent down these unfunded mandates and. We're, we're low in regards to our funding. I mean, people throw it around, but it's a real thing. We may just need to sue the state to make sure that we provide the proper dollars. So absolutely I would support it and it's the local being innovative to take care of a problem that belongs to the state.
Thank you. Ms. Chen.
I think it's the nails. Your nails are too fabulous.
Yes, yes, you can say what color they are. Thank you so much. So everyone tonight, I have heard them talk about technology and communication. In my other life, I do work in the Medicaid space. So I do want to bring up the fact that. The state of Florida, we're at a fourth grade literacy level. So when you are, if you are elected as. Um, in this particular position for commissioner, I wanted to know, how would you be able to communicate to me in aligned with that particular? Level for your, for the population? And I'll start with Mayor Hazel.
Okay, thank you. How would I communicate with you at what level? Was, I was going to ask you, what did you clarify what you just said?
No, no, no problem. So basically, you know, dealing with a lot of the different populations that you would be serving. It is at the fourth grade level. How would you be able to align and communicate with those, with that population?
Okay.
With the DUIs. So if you're going now, you're editing things. How are you going to be able to do that? Because they have limited resources. They're not going to be able to, they may not even understand the newsletters that you're sending out to them, those type of things.
You know, everything that you do is outreach and it has to be personal. And that's how I've served here in Broward County. You have to listen to your constituents and meet them at their needs. So the services you would identify. I have residents instead of going online and communicating with me using that ITech technology. I'm still encouraging them, I'll take your phone calls between a certain time. I can't do it any other way. Especially during COVID, but I believe strongly we have to meet our communities at their level in everything that we are providing. When I talk to my staff, I say, remember, my businesses are mom and pop businesses. They only have one person running that operation. So don't tell me you expect for them to leave that business. And come into the city for any information. So we have outreach going into. The warehouses to, into our industrial park, talking to our businesses and providing the services there. And we have to do that at every level of service. You have to meet the people at their needs. And that's how I legislate. That's what I expect from staff. And I can tell you, it has worked for me. So we're doing different things in Lauderdale Lakes. To keep up with the language diversity that we have, the educational level of the people that we have. And we are pointing them to reserve, okay, Broward's a program, Prosperity Broward Program. You have all of these programs, but yet no one is focusing and seeing, looking at the numbers who are participating. Are you getting participation from the communities that need it the most? That is where leadership comes in. You have to analyze and you have to make sure you're achieving your goals for your communities. You can have every policy you want. If it's not effective, if no one is double checking to see if it's working. Then you're not doing what you're elected to do.
Thank you.
Make sure the residents get to the people that need it most. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Representative DeBose.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm going to tell my thank, I got your, your question. Um, I think how we, uh, meet the, every population, we have to embrace them and we have to meet them where they're at. So, um, based on your question, I heard literacy at a fourth grade level. Um, I don't think that just because someone has, uh, literacy at a fourth grade level, doesn't mean they can't be successful, right? There are folks who, uh, may not even be able to read well, but they're very successful. They have businesses. They've come up with other coping mechanisms. So I bring that out to say, if we meet people where they're at and we sit down with them. And then that way we use them as ambassadors to help us to communicate so that we are outreach and in meeting people in, in different ways. So the other thing you mentioned technology, well, we still have an issue with the digital divide, especially in the black community. And if we can bridge that gap, we'll start communicating with a lot more people. You know, somehow, you know, our kids have it. I mean, my, my, my son's going to the third grade and he's more savvy on technology than I am. So, you know, um, I think again, if we recognize that population and we engage them and we use them as ambassadors. We can, uh, address that and, and fill that gap. You know, we have people who come to this country, can't speak the language. They're still successful because they have skills and they've learned to maneuver. So we got to learn to meet folks. And present in that manner regardless of where they're at as far as literacy, language or technology. And we can do that, um, if, from the county level because we have the resources. We just need to not be afraid to get in the trenches and engage folks where they're at and find out exactly what they need. And learn how to communicate with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Gata.
Well, thank you again for that question. If I understand correctly, you're saying how would we reach our constituents? And make sure that everybody understands regardless of what level of understanding they may have. Am I correct? All right, um. People usually listen. They may not be able to read. They may not be able to write, but when they hear it. Most likely they will be aware of it. So I think we've got to be able to look at the mediums for communicating, you know, where they could hear it. They could visually see what we're trying to communicate as well as speak it. So I believe the, um, technology divide is real. And, uh, we've got to be able to get everybody up to par, whether we go to homes, just like you have the starter, uh, the, what you call it. You have people going into homes, really teaching parents how to become. Better parents or great parents. We ought to have initiatives like that where people are learning to use the technology. But I think radio, I think, you know, whether it's visual aids. We ought to be able to utilize all of that to ensure we're communicating with our people. And, and then again, you know, I believe that nowadays, having a mobile office. Having a mobile way of going into communities where you're not able to reach your people may be the way to go. So that's something I've thought about if, 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 uh, you know. District nine, we would definitely need that kind of, uh, way of reaching the people, making sure that. We have the language competencies, the cultural competencies to ensure we're reaching our diverse, um, groups of residents.
Thank you. Was that everyone, Julie?
I think, oh, no, I am.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I, I, um, communicating with someone at the fourth grade level. Uh, that is no different than communicating with someone with a higher level if, if we speak to them. Um, I, I believe that, uh, right now, Broward County, there is a need. For Broward County to prepare our workforce. To be ready for those, uh, jobs that are disappearing. For example, if you take the cashier at the Walmart, that is a position, a job that is disappearing. Definitely Broward County needs to prepare our workforce when those, uh, uh, jobs become totally obsolete. In order for us to continue, uh, and give these, um, uh, people who, who this population, the, I know the mean. Uh, for them to make a living. Uh, also the, um. Technology divide is very real. At the Brown Democratic Party, we do have that, um. That, um, um, miscommunication, I would say with our, um, elders, you know, the, uh. Older, um, um, voters, in order for us to meet with them, they, they are not too familiar with the social media. Uh, that is an issue, but yet we must reach out to them and make sure that we continue to communicate with them. Uh, on, at every level. So, uh, uh, reaching out will be, um, we do workshop. Um, uh, they find out which medium, uh, that population uses the most. If it's radio, if it's, um, doing, um, um. Community, community, uh, centers or neighborhood, um, uh. Uh, uh, neighborhood meetings and stuff like that. Definitely, uh, we, I think. It's possible. I mean, the, the program will be to ensure that we reach out and communicate with everybody. Regardless of their level of education and meet them where they are. And also remember, uh, prepare the workforce for, um, George's jobs. That are disappearing and make sure they have a way, a mean of making a living.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Asgud.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure most of you have heard me give my disclaimer about being a millennial born in the wrong generation. So I have to make sure that I'm representing both of my generations tonight. What is your commitment to appointing young people to boards? A lot of times as elected officials. You have appointments to different boards within that structure. And we're at a time now where we have to sincerely focus on the next level of leadership. So. What are your thoughts or have you thought about young people that you would appoint to committees and boards to give them the experience and knowledge? And as well for the community to benefit from their experience and knowledge. We have some brilliant young people. You know, in Broward County and many of them are looking for opportunities to serve. On boards and volunteer and get exposure to government and how government works.
And we're going to move to a one minute responses and who would you like to go first, Dr. Asgud?
Okay, I will start first with Giselle.
Yes, I love that question because the millennial, we've got to prepare them. They do things very differently than us. And, um, one of the things I think is really important because you will find someone who's twenty something, thirty something. Who does not understand the role of government. They don't understand the role of elected official, the role of administration. They don't understand the role of elected official, the role of administration. So the Citizens Academy that currently exists at the county. Where you learn about all of the different aspects of governance at the county. I would ensure that we have, I would appoint at least a millennial as one of my appointments when I have more than one. So we've got to get them to understand the role of the county, what does the county do? So through the Citizens Academy, they would start, and once they complete, appoint them to different advisory boards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I.
I believe, thank you, Dr. Asgood. I believe that uh the millennials, they are our, our future leaders. Some of them are already in position of leadership. Uh, definitely, they need to be educated and we place um the, our generation because they are our future. And the more exposure they have to government and how things work, the better that will be for us as um retiring people. Definitely, I would um, um, appoint the millennials to boards, whichever one that is appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers.
Hey, thank you. I believe definitely we have to engage the millennials. But I can tell you, we currently, I currently do look out for my children. I take them places with me. I'm mother hen to our children. But I make sure they understand their opportunities that we can give to these young people. And how many of us have actually adopted a child, walked that child through the process? Created the mayor and commissioners for a day in association with us, with a group, the Kwanis Club of Lauderdale Lakes. And have sustained that project for over twenty years, alright? Our kids, our millennials, my advisory boards, those are the places, interning at City Hall. I create opportunities always to engage our children and it's, and our young people, I keep saying children. Or young people, giving them opportunity. I am conscious of that. I don't have to be elected to make sure we take care of children and knowing and understanding they are our future. Thank you.
Representative DeBose.
Thank you for the question. Um, I'll just continue to do what I've been doing um since I got elected. Uh, back then, they were, folks were closer to my age, but I definitely appointed them. Um, the new state representative, uh, Darryl Campbell as a prime example. Uh, not only did I appoint him, we worked in my office, got the experience. And now he's representing uh District ninety-four slash ninety-nine. Uh, also, uh, my last aide, um, Nasby is now a policy director over at United Way. So I believe in it, I'm not only saying it, I, you know, I've done it, I have the experience. And I'll continue to do it and expand on that and even go a little deeper to the generation after that. And I believe in mentoring them as well as exposing them to civics and government. Uh, there've been many years I've taken a busload of young men up to Tallahassee for the first time to see the Capitol and do those things. I think it is extremely important and uh thank you for the question.
Okay. Um, I have, let's do a little, let's have some fun here. Let's do a little speed round on this issue of the mayor of Broward County. So, um, these are the questions and we'll call it the answer. The first one is, what is your position on should Broward County have a mayor? Should they have a countywide mayor or a strong mayor? Next part, um, so that's, it's, should they have a mayor? And it should be a strong mayor or countywide mayor? Should it be a full-time position where they would have no outside employment or a part-time? Where they could go and have uh other employment? And should there be an increase in county commissioners? Or should there be uh, so he just, there was one proposal that was quite interesting where he's kinda like makes money. Doesn't really vote on a whole lot of stuff, but you know, listen. They've got some interesting things going on, so let us uh, we'll, we'll just, it, it'll be like a yes or no or to be. First one would be the strong ma- county mayor, yes or no? First one would be, um, would it be a strong mayor or is it gonna be a countywide mayor? You know, there's a difference. If, if, well, those of you who may know your history, and I'm sure uh, uh, Mayor, you do. I think you all, you and DeBose were in Tallahassee, I think at that time where the, the mayor would have, the strong mayor would have been a czar. He was actually gonna be stronger than any other counties in the state of Florida, which was similar uh, uh, populations. So let us go, let's go with the mayor first. So what is your position on Broward County having a mayor?
Okay, you're talking to a mayor, right? And I'm not a strong mayor, okay? And I like the fact that we have.
Oh, yes or no? Yes or no, Mayor?
Okay, no, not right now.
Okay, okay, so then if you did have one, would you propose a, should it be a countywide mayor or a strong mayor?
Countywide, uh, countywide.
Well, when I say that, because if one of the proposals is you'd be like a countywide mayor, but you don't really do a whole lot? Like, you're just kinda up there and get paid situation?
There's a difference, okay?
I, I understand that, but that's, I was looking at the proposals as they came about for people to consider.
Not a strong mayor. So I'm answering that.
Preferably no mayor, and if you had to, it wouldn't be a strong mayor, okay? Um, what about it, should it, should that be a full-time position? Or should it be part-time and they can have outside employment? Because the proposed salaries are nice, okay?
Okay, if you're gonna be a full-time mayor, okay? You need to be a full-time mayor. There's no part-time mayor. There's not even a part-time commissioner. There's not a part-time elected official.
Well.
About Dr. Asgood and Bobby, there's nothing part-time about what we do.
Yeah, well, it's a part-time, full-time, so you can have other employment. So yeah, technically, yes. Um, and so should that person be added to the commissioners or should it just be a mayor spot? Cause there are, this is what was being proposed according to uh, um, the information that we received. So y'all got a lot of stuff going on down there is where we're going with this. So I wanted to know if you had done your research and figure out what in the world are they proposing? And is this an opportunity for folk to, a power grab for some folk as well? Okay, so you're going with, no, you're not, it's not time yet, we're not ready yet.
Not time yet, we're not ready yet.
Comfortable with the system we have now where they elect the mayor from the county commissioners for the one-year term? Okay?
Everyone an opportunity and not just one person.
Okay, Gata.
I do not want a strong mayor. That is, that would not, no.
Do you, you want no mayor, okay?
No, no, I didn't say I don't want no mayor. I do not want a strong mayor.
Okay, you want a mayor, yes, you want a mayor, but not a strong mayor.
That is correct.
Okay, and should that person be allowed to have outside employment? Should they just be full-time?
Currently, they all have employment, so as long as they're able to take care of the business at hand, I don't have a problem.
So that's a yes, the person should be allowed to have outside employment, okay? Should there be an increase in county commissioners?
Um, I thought there, there was gonna be an additional district. So we gotta look at the next session when we do redistricting to add on a new seat.
Okay, but we're gonna be doing something probably before, if, if this passes, we'd be doing something before the ten years from now. So as it stands, was that a yes or no?
This time, I would say no.
Okay, thank you. Um, Bobby DeBose.
There was one more question. There was one more question that was not asked. May I?
The questions were, do you think there should be a mayor? You said no, and you said yes, but they should be more of a countywide, but not a strong mayor. Then you said, um, should the position, should they be allowed to have outside employment, meaning they'd be full-time with no outside employment? You said yes, and then you said, should there be a, a increase in county commissioners? And you said, um, you believe that there will be, but it may be until, until before.
There was another question I thought I heard, which said that if we have the system, if we have a mayor. I wanna, I want a mayor, but I don't think a year being appointed as a mayor.
Yeah, we covered that. That was not.
I didn't have the chance to say I would extend it to a couple of years rather than one year.
Okay, alright, um, Aunt Sakot. The question is, do you believe it's time for Broward County to have a mayor?
No, I, I think the way it is is fine um to be chosen by their peers for one year. And yes, they can have, it, the way it is right now is fine. We're not ready for a change yet.
Okay, so that's a no across the board. No strong mayor, no mayor, no full-time position, it could still have art, uh, uh, outside employment because they're gonna remain as they are. And there should be not an increase, okay? That's what we needed to know. Alright, did I get everyone?
Alright, Madam President.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm, I'mma just simplify and say no across the board. There's just too many unanswered questions, possibilities. We don't know if, you know, what's the purpose of having a mayor and they can't even vote. So right now, I'm in the posture, no, it's too many unanswered questions across the board.
Okay, alright, so question someone is asking here. Um, someone is, is this Vincente Thro, would you be beholden to lobbyist or to the people? So, okay, uh, let's go with uh reverse order, Aunt Sakot.
Okay, I, I am a people person. All of my history, my life has been to stand up for the underdog. And um, I will not change definitely uh for the people, yes.
Thank you. Bobby DeBose. Yeah, lobbyist, kind of a lobbyist or the people?
The people, all day, every day. Um, you, on that question, you can just look at some campaign reports. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, uh, Mayor Rogers, lobbyist or the people?
We're, okay, I'm gonna, before I answer, I'm gonna say for the people, and I'm answering for the people. But I have a minute, I want to explain. You don't sit here and just say for the people, look who um lobbyists are supporting. Lobbyists and lobbyists represent the people. Okay, if it's a business that you work at, lobbyists, my union can be a lobbyist. So, and they represent the people. So I'm, I'm here representing the people. I will have an open door policy. Because that's how you learn, you look, you get the nays and you get the fours and you put it together and make a decision. That is in the best interest of the people you're elected to serve. So I will say always the people, but I want to be knowledgeable about the decisions I make. And I can get it from a lobbyist, I can get it from a teacher, I can get it from my constituents. But the final decision will be mine and I will be making and be accountable for the decision that I make. No money can't influence me, it has never done so.
Thank you. Thank you. Gata.
Yes, for the people, I am a grassroots leader and I've succeeded well in that, been recognized for, for that. Because when you are in government, when you're in public office, you've gotta be able to improve lives and touch lives. So that's what motivates me about that. So the people, I will look at all aspects of making decisions. But definitely, my people would be the one who will determine how I decide.
Thank you. Uh, thank you all for participating. We are gonna do a one-minute wrap-up for all of the candidates. And let us start with, um, let's start with, uh. Let's start with, uh, Aunt Sakot.
Okay, thank you very much for, uh, give, having given us this opportunity for, to present ourselves to the community. Our platform, what we stand for and everything. I um, I, it only, you have to look at, um, if you, in, in order to understand how people will behave in the future. You need to see what they've done in the past. I am a doer. I make things happen. I have been in this community, working hard uh in the trenches for the people and I will continue to do so. I have um, joined the Complete Count Committee, understand the challenges for District Eight. And, and I'm willing to do what it takes. I, I don't have another, a job, I'm a retiree. I have all the time necessary to dedicate to my constituents. And I am a doer, like I said, I would make sure that their interests are um, uh, uh, protected. And I, I would make the difference in the positive differences of District Eight.
Thank you. And in uh thirty seconds, how can we reach your campaign?
Oh, I have a website, www.votethold.com. And I have a phone number, um, um, nine, seven, five, four, four, two, three, twenty-two, four, zero.
Representative DeBose.
Uh, deboseforflorida.com and um, the same number is at nine, five, four, five, four, seven, fifteen, eighty-seven. Um, uh, Madam President, thank you for allowing us to have this platform. Um, it's very simple. I'm a son of District Eight. I have the experience on the local level, on state level. While there are champion, these issues we had as far as small businesses, working uh with the urban league. Uh, bringing down millions of dollars each year, uh, affordable housing, the homeless, millions of dollars for Lauderdale. Criminal justice reform as far as policy. Um, again, um, I ask for your vote, Bobby DeBose, District Eight, um, August twenty-third. Again, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Representative. Gata.
Yes, thank you again and congratulation on a very, very well organized forum. I'm very proud to be part of it. My name again is Gata Wurries Nicholas and District Nine is one of the most diverse districts. And I believe that motivates me to really positively impact. Impact not only in terms of creating business opportunities, also um, job opportunities. And when I talk about job, I really am talking about job of the future. We gotta get our workforce ready for that. Affordable housing and rental for all. This crisis, we have to take control of it. And as our baby boomers, our group of baby boomers is really growing. We've got to be able to put more resources for the elderly, for veterans and vulnerable populations. So that everybody has some dignity and live with dignity. I am running for Broward County Commissioner, District Nine, because I see a new vision and I can implement that new vision. So on the twenty-third of August, vote Gata.
Thank you so much. And I, did you give your website?
My website is www.votegutel.com, V-O-T-E-G-U-I-T-H-E-L-E dot com. The telephone number is nine, five, four, five, four, one, three, nine, seven, three. Once again, thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor.
Hey, let me thank the organizer, Madam President, as always. You did it and your team thanks for the questions asked, because I know the community benefited from us answering and truthfully. And I just want to say Hazel Rogers is best prepared to serve Broward County, District Nine, as this time. Diversity and inclusion participation is my motto and always live by it. I can share with you also that we have to prepare our workforce for future job. We have to recognize the twin economies of, of the Broward County and the state of Florida. And that is our airport and seaport and our tourism sector. And we have to make sure we build on it, whatever we do. So I've always supported funding for the airport, seaport. And I believe that the foreign trade zone in our local communities can benefit from that partnership with the ports and the regular community. My name is Hazel Rogers. I'm running for District Nine, County Commission. And my website is rogers.com and of course, that telephone number, seven, eight, six, two, eight, nine, seven, nine, three, three. Please give me a call. I am here to serve you and will continue to serve in a, in this space. And I thank you and ask for your vote. Please remember Hazel Rogers for District Nine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Chin.
Thank you so, Madam President, for having us to be a part of like. Thank you to all the candidates for answering all the questions as well. I just want to leave the last note, just to remember, use the data driven in your communities to help drive the results as, regardless if, as you're looking to be elected. So thank you again, and we look forward to coming in and being part of many other events.
And tell us again who you're representing tonight?
I am representing Upsilon Z Omega, the unstoppable chapter in Broward County for Plantation, Florida. And Goldie Victor forty-four.
That's what I thought. Dr. Osgood.
Again, Madam President, for the forum and thank all of you for your continued community service. And for having the courage in this season to run for elected office. Many times people sit back and complain, but they don't offer their themselves for service. So thank you for the sacrifice that you're making to pursue public office. And I am so glad to be here tonight, representing Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. The Zeta Omega Chapter, the Premier Chapter. And you know, wherever you have one chapter of AKA. Because we exemplify excellence, we represent the five chapters that are housed in Broward County. So thank you to the NAACP and our national leadership and our memorandum of understanding. And certainly want to give a special shout out to all of the Divine Nine, who work so hard to make this community better. With the investments that we make as consumers, with the community service that we do and the good times that we have. Thank you, Divine Nine.
Thank you so much. And speaking of Divine Nine, I saw Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated on here as well. I saw Fort Lauderdale Black Policemen's Association. I saw uh FAMU Broward County Alumni Chapter. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated as well, uh Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. Golden Victor, as you mentioned, number forty-four, Zeta Chi Chapter of Omega Psi Fraternity. And Zeta Phi Beta as well, um su- uh supporting us as usual. Um certainly shout out to Mark Johnson, who never misses an opportunity to weigh in. Um I know that uh he had several things going on, but he made sure that he was here and had representation. It is important that we all get the facts out and we, and we take all the personal stuff out. And be about the business of certainly of our community. Um if you are not a member of the NAACP, we urge you to join. The only thing missing from this fight for freedom is you. Uh we are unit number five zero nine nine. You can join us at NAACP dot org. It says find your local unit and our unit number is five zero nine nine. Um very quickly, and um Jasmine Shirley, I'm gonna put you on the spots. Jasmine Shirley is working with us, uh certainly in health capacity. She keeps us up to date uh on where we are in COVID, cause COVID is not done. Jasmine, if you can give us a quick update, please, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam President. Um and good evening to everyone and to all of the candidates, as well as those who are listening in. Now, we all know that COVID is not over. COVID is mutating into additional other variants as we speak. Since this is not over, we, even if we are vaccinated and boosted, we still need to keep our guards up. And do all of those mitigating strategies, especially when we are in a situation in which we cannot socially distance. We should still be wearing our masks in crowded situations or in uh inside the buildings. When we are in a a crowded situation and cannot effectively uh operate. In a, in a style in which we can indeed uh protect ourselves, even if you are vaccinated and boosted. Please, if you, uh with your family members, your friends, your neighbors, those that you care for and love. This is personal. Do not wait, vaccinate. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. And to the, both the Premier and the Unstoppable Chapters of AKA. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. I got to throw the hair, I know, I got to sling it. Uh we certainly thank you to our partners, uh through Fort Lauderdale, um Kappa FSI Fraternity Incorporated. To Zeta Chi, um certainly to Golden Victor, we are, thank you. And yes, Shirley Baker, the deltas are thick in here as well. We absolutely appreciate your continuing partnership. Uh and with that, I will ask um Minister Edwards if you will take us out, please.
Madam President, let us go to the throne of grace. Eternal God and Father, we are thankful for what our eyes have seen and our ears have heard. And now, Father, as we prepare to depart from this call, but never from your presence. We pray, God, that you would allow these candidates to run their race with dignity. And to serve with integrity. God, we pray now that the black vote be woke, that we come, God, as knowledgeable voters. Seeking your guidance in whom we should choose to serve your people. God, now we pray that your strength would be upon us, that your eyes would be on us. That you, Lord, would continue to be the wind beneath our wings. Blow upon us, we pray, in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.